Good Sunday mornings. This is Tom Johnson with Stu New Sunday here at KOCI 101.5 Newport Beach Coast to Mesa. It's good to have you here. Boy, there's a lot going on in this studio. First of all, I want to thank Rip for being here. Rip, good to see you. Board op Supreme passing up his Sunday. We've got a lot of people in here. We're talking Costa Mesa politics today and everybody with Costa Mesa politics seems to be in the room. We'll introduce everybody in just a second, but maybe the happiest person is just outside of the room is, I see Katrina Foley way back there. Katrina Foley's Costa Mesa High School Football Team won a game on Friday night.
Finally!
Finally, okay. So how about that for Costa Mesa High School?
What happened in the news?
Anyway, we have, I really want to thank everybody for coming in this morning. What we have is we've managed to get both sides of Costa Mesa politics in the studio today. Everybody knows that Tuesday's election day. If you don't, you've been hiding under a rocks someplace. And there's a lot to be still discussed, a lot to be decided come Tuesday. And so let me go around the room and we'll introduce everybody and then we'll get to talking. First of all, Alan Mansour, former mayor, good to see you. Welcome, Alan.
Thank you.
How's the campaign going to this point?
Very good. We're getting our message out, talking to people, knocking on doors, and it's going good.
And you have a couple of days left. Anything big coming in the last two days or is it now kind of on cruise control?
Well, let's get out the vote or try to contact as many people as possible and of course, social media and in person. But I've always had an open door policy, so I encourage people to contact me if they have a question as well.
Cool, cool. Mayor Steve Mensinger, Steve, good to see you this morning.
Good to see you, Tom.
How is, how is the campaign going in your estimation?
It's gone great. It's gone great. We're walking and we're talking and holding at events and continues on. It's a, it's an organic campaign.
So what are you hearing from the people out there when you knock on the door about what they're most proud of when, you know, for the last couple of years?
Well, I think everybody likes to see the improvements in the city. They like to see the visible improvements and the infrastructure that we focused on. And obviously, I'm big into schools, into local schools, and people are ecstatic at seeing all the things that are happening in our community that are positive. So we're, we're just, we're reinforcing that and focusing on what's good in our community.
Great. John Stevens, good to see you, John.
Great to see you, Tom.
And you're, you're running against the status quo at the present time. What do you, why, why run? Steve just, our mayor just got done saying, talking about the improvements and everything. What is your counter to that?
Well, we have a series, some serious problems in, in the town. I mean, our crime rate's up 33%.
What kind of crime is that?
Well, it's all kinds of crime. Property crime, and then, I mean, I don't want to exploit it, but we've had some violent crime that's happened, that's been in the news lately. I just saw somebody over on Continental that just got beat up last week and his eye was kind of caved in. And so when I brought up the crime rate, he said, oh, absolutely, and I'll be voting for you because that's my number one priority. So public safety is a big thing that we're hearing. Also, the issue of high density development. There's high density development that's gone all through the city, in all kinds of places that are incompatible. I was over in, in the west side of Costa Mesa at The Bluffs, and there's a beautiful house, a one-story house, been there forever. And right outside the house, I can show you a picture, there's a huge high-density development that went right there and they overlook into this patio. And then the other thing we're hearing is people want to preserve Fairview Park. They care very much about that, and that's a campaign issue. Also sober living homes and homelessness.
Okay, very good. Lee Ramos, good to see you, Lee.
Good morning. Thank you for having us here.
Now, you have walked every street for the last X number of years, I think, in Costa Mesa. You, last time you ran, you decided, I'm going to keep at this. How has that gone for you?
Very well. This time I was more strategic in my walking. Last time about 7,500, this time not quite, probably close to five. But I had the year to do it and the time to do it. So I was able to search out the areas that I needed to work on. It's been, it's been amazing to me. I think I'm very concerned about the crime in the city, the homelessness, the sober living. These are issues in Costa Mesa that are very predominant. Recently, I delved into the pension committee. We have a real problem there. After this election, I hope, if this is the leadership here, sitting here of Costa Mesa, I hope that we move forward with it and find a solution for it. The homelessness is a horrific problem in this city. And as I've walked, I staggered my walking, sometimes walking as early as four in the morning, sometimes in the afternoon, and a lot of times in the evening just to get a flavor of the situation. And we have a definite problem. We need to identify the sober living, those that are out of hand, and address that. I'm a big proponent of working from the inside out. I think there's something to say about surrounding, the Indians, surrounding the pioneers. I think the pioneers want to be on the outside, not on the inside. So I'm big on that. And I think by sitting down and having discussions, as leadership should do, I think we'll find the answer in working hand in hand.
Great. Jay Humphrey, good to see you.
Good to see you, Tom.
Now, you, when I, when I first came to Newport Beach, Costa Mesa, to assume control of the Daily Pilot way back when, early 90s, you were on the dais.
Yes, sir.
And so you've been on the sidelines for a long time. What has brought you back to, to running again after a number of years off?
Well, Costa Mesa was pretty stable moving forward, actually having budget, budget balancing considerations that were working just fine for the city. They, they seemed to be stable and what have you. And then we had a place where we had a council majority that decided that they needed to outsource everything in the city and put our 50% of our workforce on layoff notice and proceeded to keep them on that layoff notice for 12 to 18 months altogether, about 18 months. And the problem with that is, is that it's real hard to walk into your job every day and quite honestly, not know if your desk is going to be there or not. So consequently, those kind of things happen. And I was aware of the transitions to the police department, the fact that we are understaffed in the police and the fire department, both. And I watched with a painful eye, a lot of the high-density housing going up willy-nilly all over the city, not in any planned array to take advantage of those kind of things, but to actually just disrupt it across the city. And talked to a lot of people, they all felt the same way, that this, the housing was going in was not really compatible with the neighborhoods, was not consistent with the, the cultures of neighborhoods. And that looked to me like a problem to deal with. And last but not least, the Fairview Park issue came up. And it really became a necessary item to become involved to make sure that Fairview Park was kept as natural and, and consistent with, with its history and actually the way it was conceded back over to the city. So all those things.
Very good. Sandy Guinness, welcome.
Hello.
How are you?
Okay.
How's the campaign going?
Well, I don't want to reiterate what everybody else has said, but I do want to note, you referenced Mr. Mansour as a former mayor. I'm also a former mayor.
Former mayor, absolutely.
Anyway, it's busy, very busy. I am overwhelmed by the volunteers. We have so many people who are putting in so much time, who are putting in their heart. And, and it's just, it's so rewarding to see all the people pulling together.
Great, great.
Tom, if I can interject, you know, you asked, you know, some opening comments and stuff, and, and I answered about how we're communicating and knocking on doors and stuff. But everyone else talked about three issues at least. And I would just want to be on the record, I think the issues are the same for all of us. It's how we approach them.
And I was just going to go to that.
Yeah, and there are clear differences. I just would like to say real briefly, Fairview Park, I support keeping it natural. I know Steve does too. And we do not support ball fields there. That's something that's been thrown out falsely. So that's one issue. Crime is an issue. We all want public safety. We are hiring more. Steve has supported hiring more officers. I support that too. And, but don't think that that's going to automatically reduce crime. Crime is going up across the state because of Prop 47 and AB 109. And so how we address that issue. Development is an issue as well. But you look at these problem motels, there are clear differences. You have to repurpose those, repurpose those problem motels if you really want to get to the bottom root cause of crime in our city. And I support repurposing them as a way to reduce crime. Just because you hire more officers doesn't mean it's going to automatically, crime will automatically go down.
Well, if I may interject, because I didn't really speak about any issues either, I wasn't asked about any. The thing about crime and police, yes, if we had 1,000 officers and then we added another 1,000 officers, we would be so saturated, it wouldn't make a difference. But the problem is, you, you have a critical level where you need a presence in the community. We don't have enough officers to have any specialty units. We have no gang unit. We have no fraud unit. We have no narcotics unit. We're finally rebuilding a vice human trafficking unit. We do have patrol, but they're doing what they call chasing the call, where you go from call to call to call to call. And you, there's no time for the kind of community policing that reduces crime in the long run. No time to even do the kind of crime prevention where you see something suspicious on a corner, but you're already on the way to a call. And as far as hiring more police, well, we had 165 sworn officers a half a dozen years ago. We have a little, about 107, we had 108, and then somebody left now. So yeah, we need to hire more police. But this talk of, we've hired more police, how come we have 60 fewer then?
Okay, let me ask, let me ask a question. I want to throw this out there. And I want to throw this to the mayor, and I want to have the mayor address it, Steve Mensinger. And then I want to go to John for a follow-up comment. This is the comment is, I know that at one point we had 160 plus, you know, police, whatever. I know one of the things you are trying to figure out is the pension problem that faces the city. So what do we do to tackle this pension problem? Because it just seems to hang on there forever. And then I want to go to John as a follow-up and figure out if we hire more, are we just chasing it? So you talked first about pension problem and how we're ever going to get out of this mess.
And not to get, not to get in the weeds, but go back to 2011, when I first got on council, we were actually at 148 when, when the staff and the, and the CEO decided to bring in the management partners to look at what we should, what size we should be with a $9 million fundamental deficit that we had at the time. And in an election year, we all talk about what we want, right? Let's go to 165, that's the perfect number. When you talk to our chief, he'll tell you exactly what he needs. And the reality is, we're rebuilding our department because we have a system that's broken. And, and not, not to go back and revisit a lot of things, but we had a lot of issues in the last five years. We can probably talk about those issues in gory detail. But the, but the, but the listeners understand, we have to be able to pay for what we have. That's, and that's, and in the end, that's the issue. We're spending today $45 million a year for, with our police department. We were at $35 million a year just 10 years ago. So we continue to pay more. The problem is the pensions eating up more and more of the cost. So we're trying to live within our means without going upside down. We've had five balanced budgets. This year we had a surplus. In talking with the chief, we'll, we'll hire whatever we need to get to the number we need. But keep in mind, in an election year, people throw out, we have to have more, we have to have more, we have to address the issues. What I've said all along is crime's not caused by the number of police we have in our city. Crime's caused by who we attract to our city. And so we have a lot of those fundamental issues we all agree on here, right? We have, we have the motels, which are huge problem, that we're finally doing something against. We have sober living, which we're, which we have two ordinances that addresses. But every city's dealing with the same issue. Crime this year is 4% higher than it was last year, year to year. Every city's got the same issue. I talk to mayors continually, and this is the biggest issue. And as Alan mentioned earlier, the biggest issue is caused by AB 109 and Prop 47, releasing people back into, you know, it's a catch and release program.
Right. And it could just get worse this year.
And it's going, it is going to get worse. It's going to continue to get worse until we as, as a, as leaders and we as a community decide to look to our leaders in Sacramento or creating these conditions and say, we've had enough. We've had enough. But the motels are the single biggest contributor to these problems. And if you talk to the rank and file, they'll tell you the same thing.
John, your counter, your counter, how do we get, how do we get through this pension? Let's say you get into office and we start an aggressive program to hire more police because we're, you know, the claim is we're down or whatever. How do we, how do we get our arms around this pension?
Well, let's talk about crime first, okay? You know, the question is, if you have a weak police force, which we now have, we have, the people that are on, on the police force are doing their best, but they're undermanned. Based on our current budget that was approved by Mr. Mensinger, we have 36 vacancies. That includes staff and sworn officers in the police department.
Non-s sworn.
We have, we have, we have 74 vacancies throughout the city of Costa Mesa in, in budgeted positions. So we have, it's very difficult in Costa Mesa and has been, under the Riegheimer-Mensinger regime, to retain and recruit employees because there's not the respect for employees. And so, you know, our greatest recruiters could be our police officers. But if they're being sued, if they're being mistreated, then they're not going to recruit their circles of influence in to, to make up for the deficit that we have. When the people who are the bad guys, who are coming in to commit crimes in our city, hear that we're undermanned, hear that we are chasing calls, as Sandy said, hear that we don't have suppression units like Irvine has, like Newport Beach has, they're going to come and victimize our citizens. And you see it every day. And you're seeing it increasingly in a violent way. And that's what we need to deal with. Now to the pensions. So I was on the Pension Oversight Committee. In the Riegheimer-Mensinger regime, pension, the underfunded pension liability has increased by almost $30 million. So they've had five and a half years.
I'll get to you in just a sec, Steve.
They've had five and a half years to deal with it, and it's increased. When I was on the Pension Oversight Committee, it occurred to me almost immediately that there's a few things that you can do and you should do. We should pay our pension obligation.
Which is what, a year?
A year, I don't know. I don't know. But, but we should pay it early, early in the year to, we achieve about, if we can afford to do it, and we could that particular year, you achieve about a million dollar discount if you pay, pay it in advance as opposed to overtime. And of course, you have to be able to afford to do that. And we talked to Steve Dunavant, Pension Oversight Committee did, and he said, you can afford to do it. And you save that money. Take that money and pay it toward the fireside fund. We owe $22 million on the fireside fund. We pay 7.5% interest on that. I will tell you that if I'm elected, within the first six months, I'm going to huddle up with the Pension Oversight Committee and Steve Dunavant, and we're going to come up with a plan to pay that down as soon as possible or refinance it. We had a gentleman come into the Pension Oversight Committee that explained to us how we may be able to get a bond to pay that off and then pay the bond down at a lower rate, a form of refinancing, as you would in your home if you were paying 7.5% in interest. You would do that. It's the smart thing to do and it's the right thing to do. The other thing, if I could continue about the pensions, it's a 206, 246 million dollar bogey. So if Mr. Mensinger or Mr. Mansour or Jay or Sandy for that matter, is running on the idea that they're going to come into office and they're going to deal with that, and at the end of their term, we won't have an underfunded pension obligation, they're just not being straight. It's a big problem, and it needs to be dealt with at Sacramento. How can we deal with it? If we pull together, the one thing when I was on the Pension Oversight Committee from the very beginning, and this is the last thing I'll say on this, in Cinco de Mayo of 2013, I said to Jeff Arthur, who's a great guy, I said to him, let's bring the bargaining units into our discussion about the pensions. They know a lot about it. And what would be some of their ideas? And they, he didn't want to do that, and neither did the other people on the Pension Oversight Committee, which I thought was odd. But what I think should happen is, I think on a regional basis, cities and bargaining units should get together and talk about, how can we deal with that? Is, is a hybrid plan doable going forward? Is there something we can do to really deal with pension reform? And then take that to Sacramento. Because the pension issue is not going to be handled in Costa Mesa. It can only be handled in Sacramento.
But that's a scary thought to me because Sacramento, to me, has ignored the will of the people for so long.
But, but, but we, we can form, if, we can come up with ideas, if we collaborate with our, with our bargaining units and collaborate with cities regionally, we can come up with ideas and take them to Sacramento for some real, real change. Because what we're doing is just chipping away at it, rearranging the deck chairs on the Titanic. We need real pension reform, and it has to come from Sacramento.
Here's a, here's a funny thought I have is, I mean, it's not funny, ha ha, but, you know, you know, there's a lot of talk on one side of the aisle about, about giving people free college educations and things like that. And I just got done putting two, two girls through college that taxed the heck out of my, you know, my, my financial situation. One, one was out of state tuition, one was in state. I pay all this money. Now they're talking about giving college education away for free. Steve, let me ask you, is, when you're overseeing a city like Costa Mesa and you're looking at the, at the pensions as they are, aren't you kind of waiting to see what happens with other cities before you decide? I mean, wouldn't it be, would it be good or bad if we were the first city to pay our pensions off and then the next week they decided pensions are going away because everybody can bankrupt?
Yeah, so there's, there's several schools of thoughts. And, and John probably missed this meeting. And I don't have the record with me, but he missed something like 30 or 40% of the Pension Oversight meetings. And it's, 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 and you can, you can verify it for yourself. But the reality is, we can look at Stockton, we can look at Vallejo, we can look at San Bernardino and other, other areas and see what they did. Bonds just don't work because basically you're, you're putting a bond on, on an obligation that grows. So today, your unfunded liability could be $250 million at seven and a half percent. Well, tomorrow, if we have a 0% return, that unfunded liability, as we know from just a couple of months ago, when it went back up, is going to go up 20 or 30 million dollars. It's going to continue to grow. So it doesn't mean you're locking in your, your denominator on this, on this particular obligation. It just means that you're locking in a portion of it, but you're bonding it. Stockton lost assets because of their bond. San Bernardino tried to do a bond, it didn't work, and Vallejo did do a bond.
If I may interject here.
I'm sorry about that. Let Steve finish, then I'll come to Sandy.
I thought he was finished.
No, I'm not finished, but I'll let you know. So the, the truth of the matter is, John's right, we did pay down. We, I think we put a million and a half dollars already into the fireside fund. We've decided to do that because that is a fixed obligation.
Okay.
We can do that. But we cannot continue to talk pie in the sky. And all of us have to understand the number. In 2011, when we took this on, nobody understood what the pension obligation was. And I think it's important, and I want to remark right now, in 2008, the council agreed to enhance the pensions, and our obligation went up $60 million with one vote, which is why we established the coin ordinance, just to, just to address that issue.
Sandy.
Well, I actually, part of what, you, you did correct, one of the things I wanted to interject, which I believe John was referring only to the fireside fund, which is a fixed obligation.
Explain what the fireside fund is to people out there that might not be familiar with that.
Well, at one point, much of Costa Mesa's pension was a city-type pension fund. And then when the city chose to join PERS, for, that's Public Employees Retirement System. In some cases, it was about even. Interestingly enough, when the police system was put into PERS, the city actually got money back, which then went into the City General Fund. And the fire one was underfunded. So there was a low from the other cities in that particular part of the system. And it has since grown because it has seven and a half percent interest. And of course, if you can refi it at a lower rate, it makes a lot more sense. And that 2008 vote, the only one of us who was on council that time was Mr. Mansour. So.
Actually, no, Katrina was on the council also.
I mean, of the six, she's not on the radio show now. I mean, of those of us who are running currently, it was only Mr. Mansour. So, and anyway, but I would like to actually correct something about finances that was said earlier. The city had, there was some talk about the city having a $9 million deficit. It, in January of 2011, at the time Mr. Mensinger took office, that, for that fiscal year, we were pulling out of the recession, and the city was on track to have, I don't remember the precise number, about $3 million surplus for that year. However, the new council, by the time we came to the end of the fiscal year, that surplus had been cut by about a half a million. And while I'm really glad that we've come out ahead revenue-wise for our general fund, we're still 20 million below where we were before the recession hit. And so, on our last audited numbers. So I do believe we need to work harder on rebuilding our reserves. And there's other funds too, that are behind where they were even in 2011. So we need to do more. And one of the things we really need to look at is how to even out our volatility of our sales tax. Right now, we're, we're, we have record-breaking sales tax. So this is the time that we should be really socking it away. One of the things I've thought, I've talked to some of the people on the Finance Committee about, is to take an averaging, instead of budgeting for the sales tax that we have at the current year, look at a five-year running average. So if we have a peak year, we don't spend it. We have a peak year, we look at what we've typically been having, and we don't spend more than what our average has been. And then anything extra goes into a reserve to tide us over during the lean times.
We have a couple of, we have a couple of days of campaigning left. Now, I look at the last week or two in campaigning, and, and I can basically give both sides a shame on you. And, and the shame on you comes from, you know, you know, the public. So if I, if I was talking to, and I respect all of you in the room. So when I bring this up, just understand where I'm coming from, is the, the one side, which is Ramos, Mensinger, and Mansour would say, shame on, you know, Guinness Humphrey and Stevens for using our public employees to go knocking on doors and passing out flyers because this is a group that you're going to have to deal with down the road on reforms to get our house in order. Then on the other side, because there is so much animosity, I shouldn't say, there appears to be animosity between the Ramos, Mansour, Mensinger ticket on the other side. You guys went out and bought a fire, took a fire truck and made it look like a public employee. So let's start there. John, why is it right? Oh, let me, let me give this to Jay. Jay, why, and then I'll go to Alan. Jay, why is it, why is it okay for you guys to have the public employees out there knocking door to door? And then how do you go back to the table, six months down the road, negotiate against them, looking them straight in the eye?
Well, I think there's a couple of factors there. First, you, anybody who constitutionally wants to express their thoughts and what have you is more than welcome to do that. As a public employee, as an individual, there's still people who work, live in our city, no matter how we look at that process. Secondarily, and what's really probably more important, is that they make choices, everybody makes choices based on how they see things. Sandy already was involved in renegotiating the police officer's contract. And they actually negotiated to a place where they increased their percentage of the pay, that what they paid to their pension liability. And that was between Sandy, Sandy, Katrina, and.
Gary.
Gary. So the, the three of them did that. And that's what happened. And it had no, nothing to do with anybody else. But the public employees that we're dealing with understood that Sandy supported them and Sandy supported them very strongly. And they still worked to get a reasonable, fair, and equitable deal across the board. So to say that in fact, because the public employee supports you, I would hope they would support all the council people. I would hope they would step up to the plate and say, you know, we've been treated well. We have, we've been treated fairly. We've been treated equally. If they can't say that, then maybe they have the right to say something about that. And that's what they're doing, basically.
Alan, give me the other side of that.
To briefly address, so we were on a decommissioned fire truck. Yep, we had our banners on it. We were driving around, we were having fun, we're getting the word out. People can see that. Mr. Humphrey's had a mailer go out with the city seal on that. He knows that's wrong. That's, that's, that's a crime. And also, the firefighters out there in what appear to be a city uniform. Maybe they bought it separately, but it appears to be a city uniform. That's deceptive in my part, but let's, in my, in my opinion. But let's go back to the beginning. There's something I really want to hit on. First of all, I have a wife and two kids. I want the city to be safe. Steve has a wife and a couple of kids. I know he wants the city to be safe. But let's go back to hiring quality officers. Here's what happened four years ago. The police union hired a law firm, made up of attorneys that are former police officers. They had a private investigator who was a former police officer. They, excuse me, they tried to get a hooker, to, tried to get Gary Monahan to take an offer of a hooker. They put a GPS device on Steve Mensinger's car. put a GPS device on Steve Mensinger's car. They called in a false DUI against Jim Righeimer, trying to dig up dirt or plant dirt. Now, the firefighters' union, and we all love our firefighters and our police and our teachers and our employees, but for the firefighters' union to hire someone from that same corrupt law firm, but by the way, the PI that was a former police officer, he pled guilty to the GPS and the false DUI felonies. So for the fire department to hire an attorney from that law firm, and for the firefighters to be using the same tactics and going out backing candidates, it's overpaying money. It is over money. It's not about public safety. We all want the public to be safe. I do, Steve does, and we support hiring more officers. Those are false arguments. We have to face the fiscal realities. Look at this, do, people out there, do your own research. Look at the city of Vallejo, do a Google search. Stockton, do a Google search. San Bernardino, do a search. Fountain Valley and Westminster, those are bankrupt. Fountain Valley and Westminster have a one-cent sales tax to pay for the pension debt. They are in fiscal trouble. That is right here in Orange County. We are facing the same thing. Steve Mensinger has shown great leadership on addressing that issue. And make no mistake, the firefighters' union is supporting our opponents for better pay and benefits.
John, you wanted to make a comment.
Let's talk about the fire truck. The fire truck, I'll tell you, the fire truck that went around last weekend.
The one you used.
So, yeah, we'll talk about that. I drove, I drove by, that's my friend that drove that fire truck. And I drove to our walk last week and I said, hey, I'm not going to say his name because I want to respect that privacy, but I said, hey, what are you doing? Why is the fire truck out? He says, I'm taking out the mayor. And I thought, well, okay, whatever. They went around with the banners all through the city. They honked at every fire station, at every police station. They came to our walk place, and they paid this guy $1,000 to do that.
Not true.
He came, he came to my home on Sunday and apologized, because he was led to believe that the Mensinger-Ramos-Mansour team was supported by the firefighters and the police officers. And he thought it was big rah rah when they honked, instead of a disrespect to those firefighters and those police officers, which is the way they took it. And here's the thing, that is emblematic of the Righeimer and Mensinger era, to treat the employees, and particularly our public safety employees, and particularly our firefighters, with disrespect. And to put false statements in mailers about the firefighters, to put their names and their compensation, and not acknowledge that we have firefighters in our city that have worked 4,600 hours, hundreds, if not thousands, over 1,000 hours of overtime. We are understaffed. We're running a fire station, Fire Station 6, purely on overhead, or sorry, overtime. And by the way, that's a fire station that Mr. Righeimer and Mr. Mensinger voted to close. Now, they flip-flopped on that, but they haven't, they flip-flopped on that, but they haven't said that they're willing to staff it with firefighters. So here you have overworked firefighters. Their call rate is up 42%. They can't see their family. They're concerned for their safety. If this doesn't change, if it continues in this trend, they may never see a penny of their retirement, because it's a dangerous job. They go into houses to save people, they save people on the freeway, they are trained and they are the thin line between us and death. And so to disrespect them is, that's one of the main reasons I'm running.
Okay, so let me ask each of you, just a general question, and Lee, I'll get to you in just a second, is, you know, I hear a lot of people, and I hear a lot of people that say, shame on Mensinger and shame on Righeimer for having a lawsuit against our public safety and this and that, carrying it on for a while. And then I look at that and I say, you know, forget it, forget it being Steve and Righeimer. I mean, let's say somebody was trying to set me up at a bar or something like that, you know, I'm the publisher of a newspaper and I write something, you don't like it and everything, and so you're going to try to, you know, hook me up or whatever. I mean, if I found something like that out, I would be very upset, and I would probably take it as far as I could. Sandy, why am I wrong saying that?
Well, I believe in this case, the legal system outside, the criminal system is working. We did have Mr. Lanzillo, who was a former cop from, what, San Bernardino or whatever, not Costa Mesa.
Riverside.
Riverside, plead guilty. So that tells me that the system did work.
Okay.
And so, and I believe the criminal-
But criminal is not always the only answer.
Yeah, but I believe the criminal investigation is proceeding.
Okay.
And so, to me, if the criminal investigation is working, and you're getting your vindication, because let's face it, Lanzillo probably doesn't have a lot of assets, and the law firm is dissolved, so there's, I don't know what there would be to get there. And so if what you're seeking is just sort of a vindication that, you know, what happened to me was bad, and it was bad, it was a terrible thing, then I think that that's working through the criminal system. And it does, and even I think if there was a civil case and there was a very strict separation, and we didn't hear those disrespectful comments from the dais, week after week after week, month after month after month, about thugs and overpaid and leeches, well, maybe the word leech was not used, but that's, there's that implication. And so if there were a separation, but we hear the details from the dais over and over, and I know it's difficult to maintain a separation, but if you do want to have a civil case, keep the civil case in the court. Don't drag it into the council chambers.
Lee, what are your thoughts on, I mean, you were a person that was aligned with that side, then you saw all this happening. What would have happened had Lee Ramos been a part of that setup?
I would be doing exactly what the mayor is doing now. It's totally wrong. I respect what Sandy just said, but basically, all these things that we're encountering in this campaign, it's really strange to me. The reality is, yeah, firemen can go to the door, they can put on a costume if they want to. They're entitled to do that. I agree with that. There's nothing I can do about that. Morally, no. And it comes down to morals, I believe. Maybe that's just me being a little bit older and seeing it work that way. I've been walking the city. A lot of people my age, and I'm in the 50 to 70 age, have told me, wrong, totally wrong. It's reality. It happened, it doesn't need to happen. Maybe talking about it is a little bit too much, but I believe it's wrong. So, you know, I love my safety, I love my police, I love my fire. I have no agenda on it. So I understand. But I think one of the things that we face in Costa Mesa at this point, after this election, and it's basically over, you just have to go vote, is I'm hoping that leadership will come to the table and put everything down and say, we have to solve this, not the people, because we are the people, and we have to listen to the people. And in campaigns, there are morals. You have to have morals. And if you can't have that, then, you know, we're in the vat, at the bottom.
Okay, here's what we're going to do. We're going to take a, we're going to take a deep breath here, we're going to take a quick break, we're going to come back, we're going to talk about the issues and some of the measures in Costa Mesa, and more Costa Mesa politics. We're going to do a little business here. We'll be back with Stu News Sunday in just a moment. We are back. We're live in the studio. Stu News Sunday. I've got everybody who's everybody with Costa Mesa politics sitting in, sharing the room with me this morning. I want to go to Alan Mansour right now. And Alan, there's a number of measures on the ballot facing Costa Mesa. Why don't you give me some of your thoughts about the different measures and how Alan Mansour sees those?
You know, first of all, some are on there for political reasons. Just to address Fairview Park, I support keeping it as natural as possible. I'm going to be supporting the city-sponsored measure.
Which is?
You know, I did not take the time to minimize all of the ballot initiatives.
Okay, no problem.
You know, so I-
BB, is that what it is?
Yeah. So I don't support ball fields there. I think that's an issue that's thrown out for political reasons. But real quickly, you know, the problem, my concern with Ms. Guinness and Mr. Humphrey and Mr. Stevens is really not condemning the actions of the police union, you know, and who they hired, and now the fire union hiring someone from that same law firm. That's really disturbing, just backing away from it. That is a real, that really bothers me as a former deputy sheriff as well.
John.
I almost called you your honor. I answered your honor.
A lot of people do that, John, and go ahead.
Sorry, your honor. So anyhow, here's my take on this, on the lawsuit. I disagree with what was done in August of 2012. I would not have wanted it to happen to me. And the people that are responsible should be criminally prosecuted to the end of the law, whatever you get. And one was in fact convicted, and the guy that it appears was the culprit that actually did it was convicted, and good on him. He should have been, pled guilty, great. And I hope that it never happens to Steve again or Jim again, and I sure don't ever want it to happen to me. Here's my problem. As we said earlier, we're in a time of rising crime. We have 36 vacancies in the police department, and our mayor and our mayor pro tem are suing the police association for money damages. They, the only thing, and has been pointed out by mailers that have been hitting me, I've been a trial lawyer for 30 years, and I know what can be resolved and what can't be resolved in the civil justice system. And in this situation, where you have a static set of facts that occurred four years ago, there's only one remedy, money damages. Now, we know Mr. Mensinger and Mr. Righeimer don't need the money. They live in beautiful houses on the golf course. We also know we're in a time when we have to recruit police officers. Hold on, let me make my last point. Let me make my last point, your honor. And it's this, that they are paying to defend themselves against our mayor and our mayor pro tem out of their own pocket. They are subject, out of their own pocket, to damages. This is the truth. And if it's not about money, dismiss the lawsuit, and let's get going with dealing with the issues that we have, because a civil lawsuit is not going to change anything, trust me, as a 30-year trial lawyer.
Steve, I'll-
Yeah, Tom, since it's about me, and I'd like to at least address the issue. John's kind of right, but not really. And actually, he makes his money as an attorney doing this. He's involved in civil lawsuits every single day, and that's how he generates his, derives his income.
Quite true.
And I won't call you your honor, by the way.
Now, direct that to me, Steve.
I'll direct that to you, your honor. Look, in the end, my family, we all have families, we don't want them affected. What happened was egregious, what continues, the lawsuit's not over, the criminal inquiry's not over. There's other people involved. One person pleaded guilty. There's another person that's going to go to trial in April, and there's still an investigation ongoing, criminal investigation with RICO implications, that's going to happen with a law firm and others that are involved with that law firm. It wasn't something just miraculously happened. This has been going on for 20, 25, 30 years, since unions, and this is again, a distinction, unions got involved in politics. We are not suing the police officers, we're suing the union as a party to, because the union hired the law firm, the law firm hired the person that just pleaded guilty to the felonies. Now, the firefighters just hired the same partner of that firm, and that's really the issue here. My opponents, who are all nice people, and I like them, they don't want it, it's an election. If it was an election year, they'd probably say something different, but the reality is, this is a crime, this cannot happen. And if this is the biggest, this is the worst possible thing that could happen in a community, is when people are afraid to run because they don't want a prostitute sent after them, they don't want, they don't want the compromising pictures. The civil suit is about getting the truth. Our union copped a deal with the DA to give information. That information's in the affidavit. We could read that affidavit right here, but John wouldn't want to hear it because it doesn't speak well to some of the people who are still working in our police department. Our chief and our CEO have apologized. The rank and file that I talked to privately are embarrassed, and they want the police department cleaned up. Okay, it won't get cleaned up when we have apologists like my opponents making excuses. And that's just as simple as it is.
So let's do this. I'm going to go to Alan first, and then I'm going to come back to Jay. Here's the question, Alan. You get elected, you take office, what do you want to see happen in the first 100 days that you're in office to change Costa Mesa from all this angst that it's faced, you know, leading up this election?
First of all, I'd like to see more civility. I know, and it's gotten way out of hand with this election season, but civility at our council meetings, from the public, whether it's the council members or the public, on both sides.
Because it goes both ways.
It does go both ways. I've seen things that I'm frustrated with on all sides. And speaking out of turn, interrupting people, it's supposed to be a professionally-run business meeting. We're going to have these problems that we have to solve as all of us as residents at Costa Mesa. None of us, to my knowledge, are moving out right after the election. We're all still going to be here, we still have to talk with each other. I have always had an open-door policy. I like personal dialogue. It's frustrating, I post stuff on Facebook too, but it's much better when we can have individual dialogue face to face. And so that is probably the number one issue that has to be addressed right away. The fiscal issues, I want to see the fiscal responsibility continued. We can't continue to increase our pension liabilities. Make no mistake, I love our firefighters, but they are backing our opponents because of pay and benefits, not because of safety. We will hire the amount of officers and firefighters to the best of our ability to provide a safe community. And we're continuing to do that, but you have to address the fiscal issues. I want to continue the street repair. You have to have money to do that. Those are important. Development issues, I want reasonable development. I voted against 1901 Newport. I voted against another development, someone had contributed, which was put together by someone who had supported my campaign. And he was in the council meeting when I voted no. I mean, I'm not afraid to vote my conscience. And I want to see reasonable development, I want to see blight removed. There has to be some real criteria. But if you support the ballot initiative to stop all development in this city, you're not going to see our, the obsolete motels revitalized and repurposed. Those have hundreds of calls for police services to those downtrodden motels. You've got to repurpose them and get rid of the root cause of crime in our city. Just hiring more is not going to give you a reduction in crime.
Jay, your first 100 days in office.
Yeah, my first 100 days in office. I agree with that. I see everything go back to civility. And part of that is the council treating the people, get up and talk to them with respect and listen to what they have to say. More often than not, more often than not, we have councils making, we have the council majority making a choice, completely contrary to everything that has come in from the public. We've had meetings, a huge set of meetings on the general plan. And the general plan that got passed increased the densities along Harbor and Newport Boulevard. It's the point where you're going to have four and five-story apartment complexes. As far as the motels are concerned, being the root, the number one caller for police services after South Coast Plaza, because South Coast Plaza is a big organization, have a lot of different kind of issues. But as far as residents concerned, the biggest one was a high-density residential apartment complex. And here's the nice thing about that. If we use that model, that we're supposed to tear it down and rebuild it, I guess what we should do on the number one residential call-in is tear it down, even though it's just fully remodeled itself, and rebuild it with something. That makes no sense at all. The solutions are not necessarily either you have motel that's a problem and/or you have high-density housing. We, in fact, back in 1994, were able to convert two problem motels into SROs, which in fact continue to provide housing to people who were low-income. It just means they worked under a different set of circumstances, a different set of rules, and we've had no calls to those SROs since they were converted. So the answer is not necessarily throwing that away. Everybody agrees, without exception, that if there's a problem, we should fix it, and we should fix it by looking at the actual problem and finding out the best solution as opposed to the solution that our out-of-town developer friends want as an answer. So you just got to put that in perspective, that's all. I look at that as being the primary thing to do, is get back to civility, which apparently is something that we definitely need in this community.
You know, Jay, thank you very much. I'm going to go to Sandy here in just a second, and then over to our mayor. But I want to, I want to just pull- But I want to just pull out a statement. One side always says, you know, the out-of-state, out-of-town developers, and the other side says, you know, the unions, and, you know, that's where all the funding goes. And to me, you know, that's, you know, part of the issue is, when we get done with this election, you know, I would love to be a part of sitting down with a whole bunch of people and trying to get Costa Mesa, you know, in the right direction. I'm not arguing whether it's in the right direction or not in the right direction at the present time, but Sandy, let me ask you this question, then I'm going to go to Steve. Wednesday morning, when you wake up, and the city of Costa Mesa has spoken, and they have elected candidates from this room to run this city, if you're on the winning side, I'm assuming that you will say, yes, I'd be happy to accept that outcome. If you're on the losing side, will you accept the outcome?
Well, of course you have to accept the outcome, because, I mean, it's the democratic process, what am I going to do? But the thing is, I would like to say that if I'm on the winning side on Wednesday morning, here's what I would do, first off. I would develop plans for implementing Measure Y in AA, because I firmly believe they will pass, and by the way...
Why don't you describe it? AA is the Fairview Park?
AA is to keep Fairview Park natural, and contrary to what was maintained in this room, about a year or two ago, plans were drawn up for a very, an extensive ball-field complex that would have taken up the bulk of the east side of Fairview Park. So, to say that there were no plans for ball field is false. Likewise, to say that Measure AA would prevent handicapped access is false, because it specifically provides for handicapped access. And so, I'm really disappointed at the lies that have been told about Measure AA, especially because some of those lies have been told by people who are talking about maintaining a high moral ground in the campaign. Likewise, Measure Y. Measure Y is a measure that was put on the ballot by citizens collecting over 7,000 signatures. Measure Y requires a citizen vote for projects that would require a change in the general planner zoning. If something is consistent with our existing general planner zoning, it gets to move forward. Now, under our general plan studies, we showed that we had about a million daily trips. It showed that if we build out the general plan without any changes, we'd have a couple hundred thousand more daily car trips on our roads. So, if you think the traffic now isn't bad enough, we already are going to get 200,000 more car trips on our roads, so you could be ready for that. And Measure Y would put it to the voters if it would add substantially to that. Now, the thing is, another lie that was actually put out on a flyer financed by three people in this room who have talked about high moral ground, said it was secretly funded by developers. That is simply a blatant lie. Three people in this room had their name on that flyer. There are also flyers and statements that have repeatedly been made that Measure Y is unconstitutional. A judge, a superior court judge, found that it was false and misleading to state that Measure Y is unconstitutional. A judge stated that it's constitutional. So, when I see people repeatedly saying that it's unconstitutional, that concerns me. And I'm not concerned about people, say, wanting to spin their records, everybody wants to look the best, everybody in this room wants to look the best. In fact, everybody in the mirror sees themselves the best on certain days. Other days, you wake up and you go, oh my gosh, who is that person in the mirror? But, we all want to be our, look the best. But, when I see lies, repeated lies, over and over and over, lies that have been stated to be false, lies that have been demonstrated to be false in court, we spent $50,000 of taxpayer money defending a statement that Measure Y was unconstitutional, and that defense failed.
But when you say...
So, to say that it's unconstitutional is, in my mind, is also immoral. To say that it's financed by developers is also immoral. So, when you're pointing fingers, point them back at yourself.
Okay, so let me ask you just a quick follow-up, yes or no? And just because a judge has not ruled it illegal does not mean it can't be sued if it passes and go to court on that, correct?
Oh, well, you can sue over anything. I mean, I could, you know, people sue because somebody looks at them funny, people sue because they don't like the color somebody painted their house.
Okay, I just want to make sure that...
But I would point out, you know, you could sue over anything, if you have enough money and you're determined enough, but I would point out that Measure Y has a specific section that provides for a situation where, say, you might be left with no economic use of your property, which would indeed be unconstitutional. So, Measure Y has a provision that states that if it would result in an unconstitutional taking, that that project would be exempt. So, there is a specific provision in Measure Y that protects against anything that might be unconstitutional.
Steve, lots said there. Why don't you take a look at, give me your thoughts on AA and Y, and why?
And the day after, actually. You know, first of all, I'll hit why, and Sandy, she's very good at land planning, that's what she says she does for a profession. When we asked her, when we were certifying why, we asked her if she was involved in it, and she kind of skirted around the issue and said, well, kind of, I looked at it, I had some involvement in it. The reality is, she wrote it.
No, I did not, and please stop your lies.
You know what?
Ask Mr. Humphrey.
Shh, we're not, I'll come back to you if you want. Steve, you've got the floor.
Don't act like it's a council meeting where you just interrupt.
I am not a person who interrupts.
Hang on, timeout, timeout. Steve, you have the floor here, we'll come back to you, Sandy, in just a second.
So, the reality is, why, simply put, Sandy and Jay have been around for, I was a young guy when they were on council, and this is kind of their approach to things. Let's put impediments, let's make everything an initiative, and let's figure out how to stop any kind of improvement in our city. And they've tried it on IKEA, they both tried it on AAA. AAA is our biggest employer, they both oppose AAA, there's plenty of documentation on it. And frankly, if we didn't have AAA today, we wouldn't have 2,900 jobs. They have a different approach, I respect their approach, but why is just an extension of that same, we don't want to see anything in our backyard. And frankly, if we don't grow and we don't approve, nothing's going to change in this city. We have to have reasonable constraints, the council's job is to look at those constraints through the process, the planning commission's job is to look at those constraints through the process, and that's just the way it works. I also want to address Jay's comment a little bit earlier on the decorum. And Jay and I have known each other for quite a while, and the last six years, I've seen him at a lot of meetings, but I've never had a speaker come up to the city council and turn his back on the council in a form of disrespect. Again, that is something that he can do, he has every right to do it, but again, we all should preach, and we all should act as we preach. Everybody makes mistakes, but let's all understand it's an election year right now, and everybody's going to say they don't do things. The day after the election, regardless of what happens, the electorate has spoke, and I'm not going to, I'm going to continue to advocate for the things that I've advocated for 33 years. Kids, schools, improvement in our city, and addressing the problem issues. Number one in our city is problem motels, number, single biggest issue. Crime is not caused by how many offices you have, crime is caused by who you attract, and we've got to stop that. Back in 1995, the same group, Jay and Sandy, were on the council, when we had these same problem motels, and nothing has happened. I will make sure that nothing, I'll make sure that something does happen going forward, regardless of whether I'm on the council or not on the council, because I'm not doing this for future political gain, I'm doing this because I love this city, and I'm involved, and most people understand that.
Great. Sandy, I want to give you an opportunity to...
Yeah, if I may, to begin with, when the citizens began writing an initiative, I was aware of it, I suggested certain ones they should look at, and I think they actually dug out way more than I would have. I met with them a few times, but I did not write the initiative, and I think Mr. Humphrey can verify that. But what bothers me is just the continued, how would I put it, alternate reality that's presented over and over and over. There are certain things where you can differ, you may have a different opinion. I believe that the stats show that our high-density apartment projects tend to be problematic in terms of crime. You believe there's a greater problem in motels, I think where we have problem motels, we need to clean them up, but that doesn't mean that all motels are by definition evil, and there are things you can do, there can be best practices. But the thing is, it's the continued changing history. Your own facts, as was stated, you're entitled to your own opinions, but you're not entitled to your own facts, which is what I saw when we looked at that one ballot argument that was basically gutted by a judge, because it was based not on their own opinions, but on their own facts. And I want to have our decisions made on hard data.
I have to jump in here, really, quickly. No, hang on for a sec, I just have to jump in here real quickly into a station ID. This is 101.5 KUCI LPFM Newport Beach, Costa Mesa, and that's a legal requirement that I needed to jump in there and get, so Sandy, back at it.
But anyway, basically, whether it's the budget, where we have very interesting numbers presented in campaign flyers, our personnel, once again, were down by dozens and dozens and dozens of officers, but there's claims that we've increased the police force. We have claims about budgetary matters, where actually, this is the first, well, I shouldn't say that. Every budget that we have had for the last five years has projected more spending than anticipated revenue. We've lucked out, because we had a good economy, but it's South Coast Plaza that's balancing the budget for us, and unfilled police positions, not our financial acumen.
So, when we said South Coast Plaza earlier was the most troubled place as far as calls, it's not blighted?
I wouldn't say it's troubled, it's just, on a peak day, South Coast Plaza has a greater population than our city, probably.
I get it, I get it.
And so, of course, you're going to have a lot of calls for service.
Okay, I want to jump around real quick, because we're going to wrap this...
Wait, 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 we're going to wait until they...
Okay, Jay, jump in, we're going to go right around the room.
I guess two things. It has to do with when you talk about respect, you have to have respect going both ways. And nobody, but nobody can argue whether I show respect every day I go into council, except for one time. And that one time was because the council majority was showing no respect to anyone who talked to them that night, and it needed to be brought to their attention, and the only way I can bring some things to somebody's attention without yelling at them and calling them names, is to take a step that says, excuse me, if you're not listening to us, it doesn't do us any good to talk to you. So, that's the reason for that process, it happened the one time, but it did happen, and I will not deny ever that it happened, and it was done for good reason.
Okay. Mr. Ramos.
Well, I won't call Sandy Guinness a liar, but I think she may, to rest my sense, on the Fairview project, Sandy, I never voted to put Fields in. What I did do is I voted to bring a plan to see if it would be possible, because for 24 months, the opposition came up, and I knew the vote was coming up, and at least this gave us an idea that it's not possible to take that park down. And if you want to insist on saying that statement, guide me to City Hall, so I can read the notes to see where I voted for Fields. You've repeatedly gone on record throughout the city saying that I voted for Fields, and that vote never came up.
Okay, Sandy, take 30 seconds and get your name.
I do say that I voted that you wanted to move forward with the studies for the Fields, and you wanted to move forward further. You could have killed it at that point. I did not, certainly didn't say today that you voted for Fields, and I did reference the plan that was drawn. I didn't even mention how the vote went on that, and so, I find this peculiar. I know that at the time, there were people who believed you voted for Fields, I did, and then I examined the record. But let's face it, at that point, you could have killed the Fields, you could have killed it once and for all, had your vote, because it was, you know, you were swing vote, but you voted to keep it alive. You could have killed it by your vote, you did keep that alive. Fortunately, it hasn't moved any further, but you did vote to keep that alive, when you could have dispensed with it on the spot, you could have saved the city expense, you could have saved a lot of anguish on the part of the citizenry, and possibly even, we might not have Measure AA on the ballot.
Alan, your thoughts?
This is one of those situations where you're damned if you do, damned if you don't. Sometimes, to be fair and objective, you look at all options, even to rule an option out, you want to do your due diligence, because even though I want to keep Fairview Park as natural as possible, I do not support ball fields there, but maybe there are some people in the city who want that, I don't know, but there are some people involved in sports that really want to see more sports fields. So, if you look at a particular location, and then you can rule it out and say, look, it's just, we studied it objectively, and it's just not going to work there. Because I was opposed to toll lanes on the 405, yet I voted for a study that included all options, including toll lanes, and you have to do that to rule it out, to show it's going to cost too much, or it won't bring in enough money, or whatever, you want to be objective. So, you know, you're damned if you do, damned if you don't.
Okay, I have all you candidates, except Al Malone in today. Al couldn't make it, he was invited, and I wanted to say that, just to make sure that everybody knows that. I want to go around the room. We recorded this meeting, and I want to thank Barry Friedland for coming in and recording it today, and he'll show it on Costa Mesa Brief. But here's what I want to do, is it's being recorded, if, and I'm not saying we're going to, but if we came back to this interview a year from now, and you're on council, tell me what you're going to get done by this point next year, so people in town, I mean, I've heard talk about problem motels, I've heard talk about developments, I've heard talk about parks, I've heard talk about all these different things. What's something that, if you came back here a year from now, what's something that you're sitting here today thinking, I can rest my hat on that, and I'm going to get it done? Alan, I'm going to start with you.
Well, I go back to the motels. I want to see the motels repurposed, I want to see crime reduced. I want to see a few more officers hired, so we have, you know, can do a little better job in our policing. But I want to say also, I think it's imperative to vote no on why, because as Ms. Guinness mentioned, we get a lot of funding from sales tax, South Coast Plaza, we should not be relying on that tax base alone. We need reasonable development, and why is going to kill that. I want reasonable development. I'm hearing about what people say about the west side. I think we have to have a little bit of discernment. It was intended, and it was voted on 5-0, it was across, whatever you want to call, party lines or sides, the overlay zone was put in place to revitalize the west side. So, I think we need to be reasonable in our use of it. I want to use it to reduce blight and reduce crime, but the problem hotels, I would say, is my number-one issue. I want to see civility restored to our council meetings. If anyone has any questions, visit me on my website, Mansour for Costa Mesa. Thank you.
Mayor Menzinger, you're up next. You've been our mayor for the last year and everything, so tell me, come back a year from now, some of the things you've been talking about, what's going to be completed?
Well, two years, actually, Tom, and as I've said in my, during this campaign, I've said publicly, number one, we're going to continue to balance budgets, we're not going to bend and continue to spend money that we don't have, like we did six years ago when I got on council. We're going to have more open space, we're going to put more money away in our park funds, we're going to continue to improve roads. We paved 60 miles of centerline roads, we've 247,000 feet of curbs and gutters, and 540,000 feet of flat work. I mean, it's, the improvements are obvious as you go through the city. That's because we balance budgets, and we spend our money where we need to. We can't go back to the days of continuing to feed the unions, and the money into the unions that every council that gets elected by them does, where they walk out at a closed-door meeting, and they say, we've done some good for our employees, but we have no money left. We've got to continue to focus on things that attract new families to our community, and those are physical attributes, and their public safety. As far as public safety, police and fire. Our police department has a great new leader that we put in place, our fire department has a great new chief that we put in place. Both of those individuals manage our departments. As a council, we simply provide the funding, which we've done every single year without cuts, and we let them decide. A comment was made a little earlier on the fire department. There was a 17-point plan that we approved, that was put together by Chief Arnold and Stefano, Chief Arnold earlier. That 17-point plan had a lot of elements to it, which they have to come back to the council for, for us to approve. We did not approve closing Fire Station 6, as was repeated here. We said we'd look at that, and ultimately, we went back to Chief Stefano and said, don't close it at this point, because we're not ready to implement our full plan. So, again, in an election year, you hear lots of rhetoric out there. I'm going to run on my record, I'm going to run on what you see out there, and people that know me know that I get things done, and I'm... And people that know me know that I get things done, and I'm going to continue to advocate for improvement in our city and getting rid of the problem motels and building up our public safety without the help of the unions.
John, a year from now, you come back in here. We're going to hold your feet to the fire. Barbara would love that. What will you have accomplished in that year?
Clip this, because I want to come back and talk about this. So here's what I want to do. I want to build up the infrastructure in the police department so we can recruit effectively and train officers effectively. We have 36 vacancies in the police department. I'd like to get that down to five or six. Okay? So we have to deal with that. Now, there's going to be attrition, so that's going to be a huge issue to deal with. The fire department. I'd like to get the fire department staffing where it needs to be. We currently have 15, if you count the overtime on station number six, 15 spots that need to be staffed in the fire department. We have to do that. I want to go back to, I want to go to transporting patients with our ambulances that we paid $1.6 million for and have not transported one patient. Through doing that, we can raise $2.5 to $4 million. I want to deal with the homelessness issue in a very specific way by collecting data and dealing with Rick Francis and enhancing his tools to deal with homelessness and work on that on a regional basis. I want to deal with the sober living homes by having a partnership with the neighborhoods. I call it the Nuisance Abatement Fund, and you can find out about that if you want to talk to me about that later. And it's a very specific thing that I want to do. But most importantly, I want to listen to the residents. I want to go back to having study sessions where the city council doesn't just talk to the residents, as has been done under the Righeimer and Menzinger regime, and explain to them in a patronizing way what they should do and what they should think. I want to have a study session where we sit silently and listen to the public. And there's two specific things that I want to hear from the public on. I want to hear from the public on fireworks. What do they think about fireworks? There are some good things, and there are some bad things. I want to sit there neutrally and agnostically and listen to the public about where they want fireworks to go. And the other thing is safety in our town. Where are places that are considered unsafe to the residents? Traffic issues. For example, on Placentia, there have been two people that have been killed near 18th and Placentia because it's dark and there's no crosswalks. Where are the other places that the people see that it's unsafe in our town? I want to receive information from the public. I want to listen to that information, and I want to use that data to direct the policies of the city council towards staff and govern from the bottom up, govern from the citizens. The citizens are going to elect us. We serve at the pleasure of the citizens. We need to listen to them and stop talking to them in a very patronizing, disrespectful way, as has been done under Mr. Righeimer and Mr. Menzinger for the last five and a half years.
Mr. Ramos, you get elected to office. You come back here a year from now. What can I assume that you will have completed by that point?
Number one, I have a big passion for our super chief, Mr. Shartnick, and for Mr. Stefano. I support them wholeheartedly. I feel that you're both on the right path, safety being the number-one thing of all for our residents, our families in this city. Initiative-wise, I think both sides have some value to it, but we need to come back to the table and find a balance. The city needs balance in it. But I also support our tax base. It's the most important thing to the city, and we need to find that. I'm hoping that if I get elected, I will work tirelessly with each individual. Each individual, as it is today or future in this room, is very talented. And I think we break our city down by not bringing those talents out. And you bring those talents out, and you become strong, and you move forward. Being here, it's an old story that I've been here a long time, but I can see a vision, and that vision is a building from the city inside going out, I think, as Mr. Stevens said. I believe that our city needs to work with our children and our families. You build a strong school system, you build a strong city. You educate from the bottom to the top, and you will have a strong city. So those are the things that I'm looking forward to. The things that have been discussed here today, it's very interesting to me, all the numbers and facts and what have you. We have a city staff, and those things you will learn as experienced as some of these people are here. Sandy's been, if Sandy gets elected, he'll be here 16 years. Mr. Humphrey, if he gets elected, he'll be up eight years. And Mr. Menzinger has the opportunity to be here, what, 10 years now? And Mr. Mansour, experienced, you know? And so, we have the tools. We just need to use the tools. And basically, if you don't get along, we're going to be here a year from now, Your Honor, and doing the same thing.
Great. Mr. Humphrey, we're getting around to the end of this thing. What, a year from now, you come in, and you know I'll hold your feet to the fire.
Oh, absolutely. You've done it twice already. It's good for me. It keeps the feet really happy, a little warmth. I'm good for it. No, I think that the important thing that I've always stood for is the safety to our community first, because that is the cornerstone to everything we need to do. So we need to make sure that we have an adequately-staffed police force along with appropriate equipment and training capacity so that our police force and our fire force both are adequately able to provide us with the full safety that our community expects and desires. And to do that, we need to move forward with getting hiring done and move forward with finding different methods to enhance the ability to be proactive in the community for policing, rather than just be reactive, which is what is going on right now. They don't have the time to actually set things up in such a way they can be proactive to it. Secondarily, I plan to expect to have the overlay plans for the West Side set in, if you will, in stasis, waiting to find a method. We were supposed to, we were actually supposed to sit back and take a look at what happened and say, jeez, was this a good plan or was this a bad plan? And we have not done that. In fact, what we've done is just keeps on doing that. So I expect to have that into a stasis area and us looking at, what are the real benefits we've derived from this process, and what are the problems? And, you know, if you're replacing blight, then you have to make sure that what you're doing is you're taking care of the community that is affected by that blight, and you have to take care of the community that is affected when that blight goes away, such as some of the housing issues that are there and the income thing, the low-income housing. But more than that, too, is, and we've all talked about a little bit, is the sober living homes, which are really group homes. And as such, they fall under certain rules, but as I've always said, a good neighbor's a good neighbor and is always welcome, always. But if it's a bad neighbor, we need to take action to deal with it. We've had some action that has been started, but effective follow-through has not happened at this point. So I expect to have, move forward into that process and have established solid behaviors and solid reactions and solid expectations of the sober living homes. Obviously, you're getting tight in time, so I'll let you go.
No, let's jump to Sandy, a year from now.
Continuing on with the sober living homes, one of the things that's really important is that each sober living home have an exit plan for each client. And this is something Mr. Humphrey's brought up, too. Either you have a ticket home, or you have a placement in another facility. Maybe you need to go back to detox, but you don't put somebody on the streets of Costa Mesa. That is unacceptable, and that is one of the big problems that we have with homeless, and it's a big problem we have with sober living homes. Moving on, we do have indigenous homeless. We have people who've been here for a long time. We have people who lost their houses. We have veterans and so forth. We have a great opportunity at Fairview Developmental Center. Obviously, in one year, you're not going to have it built because you're going to have to be working with the state. But I would like to have us actually have entered into a partnership, at least, at Fairview Developmental Center, not only to get open space for fields, which we could use, or for other open space purposes, recreation, but also to provide permanent supportive housing at Fairview Developmental Center. We also have a lot of young people. There's been talk about financing college tuition for everybody, but not everybody goes to college. Not everybody wants to go to college. Some people have brilliant minds, but they're just not interested in college. I would like to see us partner, something I would like to initiate, is working with the trades, working with some of the major employers in town, working with the chambers, to start a program for job training for our youth, working with Orange Coast College as well. Another program I'd like, something else I'd like to see is the residential overlays. We've had a lot of talk about the finances of the city. The ultra-high-density housing is a drain on the city coffers. Our studies show that. Other studies show that in other cities. It costs, they require more in services than they provide in taxes, even when they're brand-new. And then, once they're older and they're under Prop 13, then good luck with that. So we need to roll back those 40-unit, 40 units an acre overlays. And the vast bulk of the property in there is not even, we've had talk about motels, but there's a lot of other properties that are in there that kind of got swept up. So we need to look at that. I would also like to see more volunteerism. We have a lot of activists in the city, and we could channel that. We could channel that. We could channel the Fairview Park advocates into volunteer planting programs. A lot of us have joined in on the planting programs that were done in the last couple years. A lot of us participated in those that were done 10 years ago. Well, we could do that on an ongoing basis. For people who want to be involved, let's do something constructive. And then finally, something near and dear to my heart. We really need to reexamine our animal care services. We need to look at our shelter overall. We have initiated a city committee that's looking at it and inspecting more often, but we need to upgrade that. We also need to do better tracking. We've lost track of thousands of animals that we've taken into our system. It's kind of amazing, 2,000 animals in a five-year period that we don't know what happened to. And the euthanasia rates that we have, while we have a goal of no-kill, our euthanasia rates actually are pretty poor. So we need to get that euthanasia rate down, and we need to be keeping track of what are essentially family members that get brought into the system. Thank you.
Great. You know what? I appreciate all of you coming in today, and, you know, it's a credit to each of you. It's a credit to our community to have this kind of, you know, group of people running for office in our town. Alan Mansour, I want to thank you for coming in and spending time with us. Mayor Steve Menzinger, thank you for coming in. John Stevens, want to thank you, as always. Lee Ramos, thank you very much. Jay Humphrey, thank you very much. Former Mayor Sandy Guinness, thank you very much. It's always hard for people to come in, particularly in a setting like this where you have everybody in the same room, but I appreciate everybody keeping a calm demeanor. We're going to take a quick break, and Rip and I are going to come back, and we're going